Further questions?
Yeah, so I'm talking about the site even. It doesn't seem like there's really a decision and it should be more open until that is decided.
Well, there'll be further discussion Joan, but I will tell you this, that the options are very limited. And the reason why is because it's cost. Buying land is absolutely out of the question. It's just too expensive. And you don't have, if we already own the land, we're going to be in a position where we can actually, we can, it'll keep the cost down to a point where it's affordable.
Well, we've done other things and not have to buy land. So there've been trade offs and different things that have been done that I think you should still be open to if it hasn't been decided and there aren't, to me, the most ideal situation because the costs from, even though the land that we own could be prohibitive too. So anyway, it seems sounds to me unless there is more that's been going on that I know.
If there are other opportunities, I'm not aware of any other opportunities for land. I mean, I know you had reached out to me at one point, but that, there's been no discussion of that happening over at another location in town. And it, I know that I think it's been mentioned that Schneider would be a opportunity. That's not an option for us. We don't own it, we don't, we don't, it's not being under consideration. Hasn't been, and the plans for that have not been determined by Schneider. So we're not in a position to even put that as an option on the table until that, that were to happen. And if that were to happen, it probably wouldn't have it for a couple more years, which then drives the cost even higher because the longer you wait, the more expensive it gets. So I'm, we're just being practical about it in that respect. Alright, so that's where we're at.
Right, and what you're saying would mean we should be looking at it right now and last year too. So anyway, we've been busy, busy, busy.
Yeah, we are.
But after that.
Yeah, we are, we are, we're taking the right steps by cleaning that site and getting that ready to go in the event that we are prepared to go forward, which, you know, we are going to have another conversation about. We've been working on that to try and come up with a strategy for dealing with that. Okay? Other questions? Alright, so let's move on, let's go on to Article 6. Article 6 is to see if the town will vote to amount, raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds to sum of money to fund a stabilization account for the fire department. This is for, if some of you are aware, you may not be aware, that a few years, about a year ago, the fire department began to repair vehicles from other fire departments. And as a result of that, the, our town, our accounting firm has recommended to us that we create a separate stabilization account to put whatever money we collect from those repairs into that account, and then we would reappropriate that money back into the budget for the following year. Alright, that's the right accounting approach from Massachusetts?
Yes.
So that's what we're doing here by creating this stabilization account. So it's really, it's a, it's a, in some regards, it could be like a sweep account because we, you take it from one year and then move it to the next. But you have to hold it that way in terms of the government, government financing requirements.
And it also allows for a town meeting approval. It also allows for a town meeting approval rather than just simply having it going into an account.
That's correct. Okay? That's all that does. Alright, so it actually creates the account, we're not actually putting any money into the account this year. We will, we probably will look at that in the fall. The fall town meeting, they actually put some, move some money into that based on the results of this fiscal year's activities. Alright, Article 7 is reestablishing the revolving accounts, which we do every year. That's not controversial, it's pretty straightforward. There's been no changes to those accounts in the, in the previous years. Article 8 is to see if town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds, some tuition reimbursement, this is a bill of prior year. So what we had here was a, an employee in the library who had, had actually passed a course, but didn't get the bill to us until after the fiscal year was concluded. So we, and it was actually for a course they took in the last fiscal year. So according to Massachusetts law, we can't approve money in another, in a new fiscal year for a bill of prior year. So we're, so this is, the only way we can do it is to go to town meeting and get them to do that. And get the town meeting to do that. So the total amount is $3,000 for the, for the account, for the amount. Yes?
I want to go back to Article 7. I just wanted to, because I see this each year now. These are, I'm assuming, totally funded by the departments themselves? And there's nothing ever put into these?
That's good, they're limits Joan, is what they are. These are limits set for each department where they take the money in and then they can spend the money out. But so, and Massachusetts law requires that we set a limit at town meeting. And so the amount here is, say, public health is $100,000. Money comes in for, say, vaccinations, things of that nature. They can then go into that account and it can be reappropriated within that company, no more than $100,000. If it requires more, we'd have to go back to town meeting for additional authorization. So, so right here is, that's all these accounts do. Same thing in recreation, police and fire apparatus, stuff like that.
How often do you have to supplement these? In other words, if they only?
There's no supplement, there's no supplement.
Maybe they had a cap of $100,000. What if they made $75,000 and they weren't fined? You wouldn't be supplementing to get up to $100,000, right?
No, so, so this is not an appropriation. Okay, let's be clear about that. We're not spending any money here.
It's a maximum?
Yes.
To make up to that amount?
That's correct, they can.
Internally?
Internally, correct. Yeah, we're not spending any town dollars to do this. This is money that comes in from various vendors or, or individuals who pay for programs and then it goes back and then it can be used for that purpose.
I just wanted to reiterate.
Yeah, what it does, in the first sentence of the article, it says, you know, to see if the town will vote to authorize annual spending limits. And that's all it is, authorizing a limit.
The reason it's done is because 99% of everything that the town does has to be voted via an appropriation of a town meeting. These by law, you can do without that. So what they're doing is giving you a little bit of a governor, being able to say, we're setting, you know, we're putting it before the town meeting and saying, are you guys good with, with $100,000 being spent out of that account? And it just kind of keeps it.
It's stuck.
Alright, are we clear? Okay.
Yep.
Let's go on to Article, Article 9 is the OPEB, OPEB trust. So I think this is a question that maybe Joan had earlier. So this is getting back to the strategy, to the practice of appropriating money for the OPEB trust, which we do typically every year. The last two years, people recall that we did not fund the, the OPEB in the, in the budget or in the, or in the warrant because we wanted to wait until, in the annual town meeting warrant, because we wanted to wait until we saw how much we collected for the previous fiscal year. So this current fiscal year, which is fiscal 2022, we will be back in the fall of, at fiscal 20, in fiscal, effectively fiscal 23, which will be same calendar year 22. And we will appropriate the amount of money for the, for the OPEB amount, for the 22 amount. I'm trying to be confusing, but that's the only way I can describe it. It's, there is a amount that we need to fund for the fiscal, fiscal 22 amount, but will actually be made in fiscal 23. And that will catch us up to where we are with all the amounts that we need for the, to keep the OPEB fund fully, fully funded from, from day one.
So they don't have to know this for this?
No, 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 this article will take care of fiscal 23. Do you follow me?
Okay.
Okay? So this, this actually pays for fiscal 23 and we're back on schedule. Okay? So we were off schedule for two years, we're back on schedule with this year. Alright, so we, and the reason why we had to do it that way is because of OPEB, I mean, because of COVID. So now we're out of COVID. We do anticipate a pretty good year coming up in terms of revenues for a better year than we've, than we've clearly a better year than we've had with a lot of our stadium revenues, a lot of meals, hotel meal tax is all starting to return back to what we previously were considered to be normal under most circumstances. So we should be okay to actually fully fund those in fiscal 23. I'm going to turn the next several articles over to Mike. Mike John, so that he can explain that we have contract agreements for the next, for the next six articles, all the way up to Article, Article 15, correct? Mike? Article 10 through 15 will be, will be collective bargaining agreements. Go ahead, Mike.
So first I'll give you an overview. So these are six contracts, each for three years, that would succeed the current contracts, which will end this July, this June 30th. What's, what these six articles are is appropriating the money to fund the first year of those contracts. So across all the six union contracts, our strategy for the negotiation team was to work to recover from, from the last two years of COVID. You know, during that period, we took about a $5 million loss in revenues. And with that in mind, we planned from, from starting back in last August on how we're going to do this to kind of step out of where we had been, back to stability, not knowing exactly what the future will be, so we planned very conservatively. We know that across the state and around our area, that the cost of living increases for municipalities generally average right around 2%. That's what we have been for the past handful of years. But for this coming year that, that you're looking to fund these six articles, we negotiated 1.5% cost of living increases with every one of the unions. And that was what was agreed to. Within those, yeah, we feel like we came up with fair contracts for our employees because if, if we don't treat them fairly, we won't keep them and we won't attract future employees. But we also have to be conservative, again, recover from COVID and be fair to our, to our citizens who are, you know, paying the bill for, for employees, our workforce and the services that, that our employees provide. So with, with that, we did, I think for the first time ever, we've negotiated all of our union contracts ahead of the end of the fiscal year that we're in. It has happened in the past that we've had some that have gone until the fall town meeting. And then what happens is that we have to go back and continue negotiating and then retroactively paying back to the previous July 1st, whatever is owed to those employees because they lapsed without a new contract. So we were able with a lot of, I think foresight, good planning and, and a lot of time spent at the table with each of our unions who put in a lot of work. And there was, there was a lot of discussion, basically five and a half months every week at the table here in this room. So with, with that, are there any general questions before I get into the specific contracts? So what I'll do is I'll go into each contract, Joan, general question.
Okay. You've been telling us that you'd like to have the budgets from year to year, maximum increase be like 3%. And so these, you know, we, our inflation for the past 10 years, even more, has been minimal, minimal. You know, you hardly have it in, in the economy I'm talking about. So when you negotiate 2% ahead like this now, that doesn't leave much for anything else. 1% for the whole rest of the budget in town. So, you know, everybody's already getting 2% so.
Actually, they're not, they're getting 1 and 1.5%.
What, for this coming year, but after that, it's 2% and 2% already negotiated in. We are going to get higher inflation and that is going to be an impact on them. So that, that would be the time to do it. I think it's been very generous. I know you think we compare to other towns. We're a small town too, there aren't a lot of towns you can compare us to.
Actually, we do, we do, we do a lot of comparisons Joan.
We have better service than any other town, that's for sure. No one's ever said they have, we haven't. So we're very proud of that. But anyway, I think it's just going to be tight. And some of the things that we got, you know, say, I don't know, fire department, what they, one of the provisions that they gave into was notify the fire chief six months before you're going to retire. Big deal, you know what I mean?
That actually, Joan, just if I can address that.
They should be doing that anyway. You know, some of the things, I read the articles.
Joan, if I could just, if I could just interject for a second?
So.
I wanted to see if there were any general questions before we get into the specifics, but since we're into the specifics, I just want to address that one.
That's what I'm talking about in general.
So that one, that one is a big deal.
No, for getting 2%, I don't think we ever, for giving them 2%, I don't think we got very much in return.
But I do just want to address the specific thing that you raised. And that was that you think it's not a big deal that we're going to get six months notification from firefighters when they're going to retire? That's actually a huge deal. And the reason it's a huge deal is because, first of all, we employ paramedics, which require an awful lot of training to get, you know, for, somebody comes in and gives us two weeks notice that they're retiring? We can't get a new paramedic in there to fill our shifts in two weeks. We can't do it in two months. Six, getting six months to retire, that's actually a, a big deal to us. And that means that we're able to always be ready to have, you know, all the shifts covered with, with paramedics in the field. That's an important public service that we provide to our citizens. And I think people rely very heavily on our public safety, our police and fire. We're very proud of that, I know the citizens are. So it is a big deal, I don't think we should downplay that. That's, that is a, a big deal.
It also means that we don't have to cover shifts on overtime. If, if, if somebody has to come in and cover that shift, then we would have to pay somebody overtime to cover that vacancy. So by not having the vacancy, you're able to pay, to pay the, the regular rate for the officer or the firefighter while that, while they're actually performing that work. So it is a big deal, it's a very big deal.
Are there any other general questions before I get into the individual contracts? And then I'd be happy to take every single question you have because I, I know you must have a lot. And I'd like to provide you with a lot of information.
Yeah.
Any general questions? Alright, so for the fire contract, which we started touching on. So, so one of the things, as, as you probably saw when I briefed this to the, to the selectmen, as well as anyone who was watching with the advisory committee, as they were briefed on the details of these contracts, was education incentives. So we, we think it's in the best interest of the citizens of this town to have highly trained and educated employees and in public safety, as well as some other unions, including library. We offer education incentives for folks who will pursue higher education. So in, in that case, we, the, the fire employees, they already do receive some education stipends and we agreed to increase those by, by a small amount over this contract. And we also eliminated the provision that allowed the payment of a, of an annual stipend for someone who had 30 degrees towards a degree, but no degree. And we, we want to see people get those degrees, actually complete them. So we, we eliminated that part with agreement from the fire union. Next, and this was, this is really an important one with both police and fire, is that the detail rates for fulfilling the details for construction projects, for events that happen on Route 1 or anywhere else in town, we were lagging way behind our surrounding communities. We were in around the $50 range, 50 to $54 range. And one, we were having trouble filling our, our details with our own people. But also because the surrounding towns are paying higher rates, we couldn't attract people from around the area. When we have an event on, on Route 1, we, we very often rely on surrounding community, fire and, and police departments to fill those shifts. Even if there's something in construction going on in another part of town and our officers and, and paramedics are down on Route 1, we need to still fill what's going on in the street. So what we've done, and by the way, if someone comes and their, their current rate, let's say in, in Mansfield or another community is $65 an hour, and our rate is, let's say, 50, just for a round number, to attract somebody from that town that's paying 65, they come here, they get 50, they get our rate. So not only are we underpaying our, our folks who are out, you know, doing hazardous duty during these details to our people, but we're having trouble attracting others. On top of that is the difficulty with demographic changes. Okay, back in the day, when I remember my, my father was working construction crews and myself, we, we worked to get every overtime, every detail, every weekend. But nowadays, time seems to be as valuable or even more valuable to our younger generations in general. So it becomes that much tougher to fill overtime shifts, to fill details. So you'll see through here that vacation becomes very important. The detail rates, we have to pay more to get people to fill these shifts. If we can't fill these shifts, you know, we, we struggle to actually put on these events that we rely on for, for revenue. Yeah, George?
Just one thing, when, Mike's absolutely right when you say we pay more, but it's not we, it's the outside vendor that pays it. So when it comes up, it's whatever the XYZ company is paying that, not the town of Foxborough.
Thank you for clarifying that, because that, that's a very important point. You know, whether it's National Grid or Columbia Gas or, or an event on, you know, on Route 1 at the, at the stadium, a concert and so forth. The money comes through the town, gets paid to our employees, you know, by the town, but that money is actually generated from wherever that event or project is, is going on. And the town gets an administrative fee to cover the handling of that and the processing of that money and time sheets and so forth. So that's another reason, you know, the, what George raises is another reason why this was such a critical component of our negotiations, to get us up to rate, to fill those details. But also to not totally burden the cost of this contract on the citizens, but also share it with our business partners in the, in the community or who come into the community to do projects. Okay. There was a, there's a small stipend for a physical fitness test that, that's added for, for our paramedics and firefighters. Throughout, throughout, it is very small, if that's what you were indicating.
No, no, I would just say that fail with it.
Through this, as, as part of the strategy that I had, had mentioned, you know, before even starting negotiations was, one, let's, let's walk before we run, okay? Or even crawl before we walk, so to speak, as we come out of this COVID period. So let's see, be as conservative as we, as we can. See if we can get unions to agree to 1.5%. And by the way, that's the same thing that our non-union employees, including myself, are going to get, that 1.5%. So that's across the board. But then also, any costs that we can put further away into the contract, like into the second or third year of the contract, we feel gives us a better opportunity to crawl before we walk. So that, that's what we did. So we know we're getting behind on some of our pay rates and I know some people find that surprising, some people don't. But we haven't changed a lot of our pay rates, other than our cost of living increase over a number of years. So that's important because if we get behind the market, one, we, we struggle to, to keep employees and we have seen a lot of people move during this, during this time. And two, as people move, we have, we have even more trouble attracting new help if we're not competitive with the market. So in that, what we've done, instead of adding a new step, like an automatic 2% for, for, you know, anybody who's at the top step, what we did is we strategically planned to do a 15-year step and in one case, a 20-year step. So that somebody not only has to be at the top step of their grade, but they also have to have 15 or in another case, 20 years of service with the town. So it prolongs a little bit and that was, I, I can't overestimate how painstaking that, that was to negotiate that, but it was a necessity in getting through these contracts.
So Mike, just in the sake, in the interest of time, because we actually went through this in detail at the selectmen's meetings. So anybody wants to go back and look at it, it's actually on tape. So you can actually go back and look at those. So I think if, if anybody here has a question, a specific question about the contracts, I think that would be a good time to ask Mike about any one of the specific ones. So because I, I think if we, if we go through these, each one, it's going to take a long time. So I, I think if we, if we do that, and I appreciate Mike's time in doing this, but I think, you know, it's, this has already been done on TV. So I think so. So, and I would say, say that anybody has any questions about a specific contract, that would be a good time to ask if I'm like.
Can I just chime in as a PSA?
Yeah.
So in order to watch the selectmen's meetings, here's how I do it. I go to YouTube and I go to Foxborough Cable Access. I subscribe to them. So now that way, whenever I go onto YouTube, I just go to my subscriptions, comes up Foxborough Cable Access and I can see all the prior shows. So just for future reference, other way I do it is I go to Google. I Google YouTube, Foxborough Cable Access, you know, Board of Selectmen, and it'll come up. So just so, it's little shortcuts because nowadays, everything's on and it's, it's saved forever, I guess.
Right.
It's a great resource. So I'm just saying that and then for folks watching at home, it's a great way that it's actually accessible now, just through a quick Google.
Yeah, not, not to, you know, I mean, this is all important information, but it's already been done. So I just want, don't want anybody to think we're trying to miss any points here. So, so, but anybody have any specific questions about any of the contracts for Mike?
Do you have a step in there to give those new kind of department heads supervisor, whatever they're called, a step up? Is there already provisions in the contracts?
Are you talking about the?
It can get increased.
The pay, the pay, I'll answer that. So the pay increases for, for the, for the different, for the different, is already built into the budget.
Okay.
Alright, so it's not, it's not.
Provisions already in there, not something new.
Yeah, yeah. I saw, I saw.
So the second thing is, what is, and I know you're on responsibility and we should have a school committee person or a school superintendent here or something because that's part of the, one of the biggest budgets. It's not questioned any, questioned anymore, which it should be because that's a place where we probably could be saving some money. But anyway, is there a schedule for the next three years? 1.5, 2, and 2%? One of you must know that.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Exactly the same.
Same thing.
Had theirs been set before ours? In other words, did they agree your contract?
Actually, it's not necessarily. So the, the school unions and the town unions were negotiating at the, at the same time. Some, some of the town unions settled ahead of some of the school unions. So there wasn't necessarily a sequence.
But it's all the same? It ends up all the same?
But it's, it so happens that, that it is the same because we actually, we actually had a meeting very early on in the process, before negotiations, to look at where are we and what's reasonable? You know, to, to look at what's, what's the forecast and how do we get out of COVID? How do we get past this $5 million revenue loss? So, so yeah, that, they, I believe they've come out.
On a 2 and 2.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other questions? I apologize for my enthusiasm, I want to jump in on this. But George and Marie and I have lived, eaten and breathed this thing for, for literally six months, day in and day out. So I just want to share all the information I can with you. So if you have questions, you know, now's the time.
And I don't want to in any way, shape or form minimize the effort that went into this. This took these guys and gals months and months and months to get these contracts done. And the fact that it was done before the end of the fiscal year and all four, all seven contracts, including schools, right, were actually completed before the end of the fiscal year is extraordinary. I've never, I've never seen that in 40 years. Never seen that happen. So congratulations to Mike and to, and to George and to, and to Marie for a job well done in this case. And that, so I, and Bill, you too, for that matter, for, for the work that they did to get these all done. And I'm really very appreciative of the work that they did. I, I, again, I just want to be, I'm, I'm not trying to go, but it's a lot of information. And I think where we've already covered it, I want to just make sure that we leave town for other, other issues.
Can I make one last comment? This is something that I reiterated throughout the six months and George can vouch for this. And this, this was advice from a lawyer friend of mine many, many years ago in a, in a civil, you know, litigation, something that goes to court. A good outcome is probably where each party comes out a little bit unhappy. And, and we did, we talked about that a lot during negotiations. And I can tell you, that's about how we came out with all of the contracts. The town did not get everything that it wanted in any of the contracts, nor did the employees get everything they wanted in every, one of the contracts. But what we did is by spending a lot of time and energy, we all came out with some good things and some things that we didn't get, but we came to agreement. And we came out with a workforce that's ready to keep doing what they've been doing is providing tremendous service to the town without damaging those relationships and having resentment, but with, also without overspending on the, on the wages.
Which brings up the question, what does the personnel wage board do now? They used to do the negotiating for the town and we had an appointed personnel wage board. I think it was appointed by the selectmen. So what is their role now?
So they have a very limited role now. So they, they do, they do actually work on all the policies.
On the what?
On all the policies, the town personnel policies. They actually approve all the town personnel policies. And then on, on the other side of that, they, I think, which then get sent, submitted to the selectmen for final approval. But they actually have a very limited number of employees who are not covered by any contracts. And it's probably what, 13, Mike?
15.
15, 15 employees covered by that. So they do set the wages for all of those. So they do set the wages for all of those folks. And if there's any changes in the, in the, in a wage scale or pay system, they would be the ones that would in fact look at that as well. Okay? Great. All right, so moving on to Article 16, which is a citizen petition for a Market Street easement. I'm gonna let Paige address one, this one, because she's familiar with this, this project.
Sure, so this is the property next to Judy's Florist. It's called, I think, the Bragg House, the White House next to that. And so that property is somewhat landlocked. They are on septic or cesspool, probably. And they, but behind them is an old, broken down house that used to be owned by the housing authority. It's now owned by the town through a land swap. In the future, in the next year or so, that property's gonna be redeveloped into a public parking lot that Doug King, the builder of the fire station project, is building for the town, and it'll be a public lot. Anyway, we realized that the Bragg House, if it's ever to be upgraded or improved, would need to comply with septic requirements, and they could not. They are also not allowed to tie into sewer on School Street. Because of the comm, the rotary work done years ago, there is a moratorium on tying into sewer on School Street. So the only way they could get sewer is from Market Street. So we started thinking ahead, and we're like, before we have a developer go build us a beautiful new 14-space parking lot, we oughta make sure this landowner isn't gonna ask us to rip it up if they need to do something with the sewer in the future. So we, we actually spoke to the landowner, she made the petition, and they're going to just, I don't even know that they're putting the sewer in, but at least they'll have the easement, so in the future, when they go to use that property, they do have the right to tie into sewer, and they'd have to pay for all the required charges and whatnot. But otherwise, they would not be eligible at all, and they'd be landlocked, and we'd be, they couldn't improve their property.
Any questions about that? Okay. Article 17 is another citizen petition for a sidewalk on South Street. This is a petition from a resident who requested an appropriation of $75,000 for a new sidewalk. This is not being recommended by, by, by the finance committee or the advisory committee. And, and, and the reason being is the fact that after further review of the proposal, this particular individual had never come to, to the town to speak to any of the staff members or anybody in town about this request that was just made as a petition article. The problem with doing that is the fact, when you do the analysis of, of what it costs to do this, this would've cost close to a half a million dollars. And the request is for 75,000. The reason, reason being is that it actually crosses a river. And in order to do that, it would've been very costly to at least, to, to make those improvements, to, to make that available. The other challenge we face is the fact that there are, there are sidewalks that we currently have, that we, that we are trying to improve, and are part of a strategic plan to actually fix those over the next several years. And we actually have, we've, we've engaged a, a study with, with an engineering firm to actually come up with a plan towards fixing the existing sidewalks that we have. And it didn't make a whole lot of sense as such to, to spend 75,000 or even a half a million dollars on just one, a new section of sidewalk, when we have a whole bunch of them that we need to fix first. So that was the whole idea. We appreciate that the person's request, thought it was, you know, a perfectly viable request to make. But, and it, but from a, from an operational and from a, a value perspective, it just didn't make a whole lot of sense to do this. So, so it's not being recommended, but the person is, I suspect there will be a town meeting to, to address this issue. And I think there's been said on some, this, it's been said that this was an issue about sidewalks all over town. The answer is no, this is only for this one sidewalk in this one particular area. They may have a philosophical position on the thing, but on sidewalks in general, which we can all appreciate. But I think this, this particular request is only for one section of a road on South Street. So that's all this is. Okay? All right, Article, Article 18 is another citizen's petition. This was another one that was not recommended, and, and I think this is an interesting article though, because this request was made from a former AdCom chairman, actually, believe it or not, who made a request because he was concerned about how, you know, how, getting notification on when zoning, zoning issues change in town. And this particular individual has a very distinct position on how, how he feels about certain articles and certain housing articles. And really wants to make sure that the entire town has proper notice about it. Well, the, the method in which this is being proposed would be, first of all, it would be costly to the town to do this. They think about $5,000 every time we had to do it, would be.
Just for a postcard.
Just for a postcard and, and for, for mailing costs alone. So, and that would be just to let people know this is gonna happen. I think there is, there is something to be said, however, that philosophically, there is something to be said about, can we do a better job of notifying people about these articles when they come up? And the answer is probably yes, but we, but we'd love to hear more about what that means. Because right now, it's a very difficult issue. It's one that's plaguing communities across the country, not just Foxborough or any place in Massachusetts for that matter. It's a very challenging issue. Mike and I just were at a, a national meeting about this issue recently, and everybody in the room was, was still challenged by, what's the best way to deal with this? So there's different ways to, to look at this, but I think the one that's, the way that's being proposed here is one that folks couldn't get behind because of, first of all, the, the cost and, and the method that's being proposed. And, and, but it does, it does want further discussion, and I think that's, that's a very valid point that this gentleman has raised. So I think it's something that we'd like to talk about further. Since this is zoning matter, I'll let Paige weigh in on it as well, so.
Yeah, the, the challenge of this is, well, first of all, from what I heard from town council, is this article as written doesn't have any action in it. Like, it doesn't actually set out a bylaw or tell us how to do it. So it's more of a referendum, and, and to Bill's point, we hear that. And in fact, Bill and I have been engaged, and Mike have been engaged in engagement in how to get community involved. You all know about town meeting, but it's amazing, every year, if you look on Facebook, people are like, they don't even know what town meeting is. And so that's an interesting problem that we need to deal with, duly noted. But from a risk perspective, the other, the other thing that was identified is, you know, how do we decide who's impacted and who isn't? And what if we don't do the notification correctly, or, you know, what's the gray areas? So this doesn't outline any of that process of how we'd figure out, you know, does it affect everybody? Does it affect only one neighborhood? Who makes that decision? What is the, the, the fix if you mess it up? That sort of thing. So I think to Bill's point is, it's a conversation we need to continue to have. We'd love to hear from the residents of, you know, how do we engage? I mean, we try things like emails and newspaper and, you know, signs on the common. And we still think that the bulk of people typically don't even know what town meeting is or what it means. So it's really difficult.
Mike had, Mike had a thought.
One, one thing that's come up in many discussions about this article is that people think that maybe it shouldn't be just zoning articles that are highlighted, is that all the articles, in fact, town meeting in general, why shouldn't we raise the awareness about everything going on at town meeting? And I think that's been generally accepted as, you know, what can we do about raising the bar in awareness and education for everybody on all articles?
Sorry, it's a very good point.
I know periodically you have a form problem at town meeting. I mean, is, are people interested? Are they just letting Joe do it or whatever?
Well, I think, it's, it's a very good point, Bob. I mean, it's, it's the world we live in nowadays, which people have a very busy, have busy lives. And, you know, they have both, both parents work, and they have long hours, and, and then they have family issues to tend to at home. And so it becomes difficult for them to squeeze these kind of issues in. And let's face it, you, if you have, if it's not affecting you directly, you're not gonna go. You're just not, because it's, it's that kind of a world we live in, because it's, if, if I can, if it means something to me, I'm gonna be there because I'm gonna make time for it. But if it really doesn't mean that much to me, I'm not gonna go. And it just, and that's just unfortunate, but, so I, I don't know what the right answer is, and I don't know what the right solution is. But we're all ears, and I think we're all open to, to having conversations about what we, and maybe this isn't the right answer, but maybe there is one buried somewhere amongst, amongst all the different ideas that are out there to try and make something that might work more effectively. Yes?
When the, like, everybody get like a tax bill or something? In relation, in time relation to the town meeting, something, it could go out, something like a notification to every household could go out with somebody else that's going out.
That's, that's a fair point. So let me just, so with, with tax bills, there's a limitation in state, state law, that we can't do that, we cannot do that. However, 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 with water bills, water and sewer bills, you can. All right, so that's, that's a different.
But not everybody's on water and sewer.
Right.
So there's our.
But there are lies, but you do get a lot of people on water, which you could probably get, not so much in sewer, of course, but, but maybe on water, you could probably get that word out a little, a little bit more effectively. So maybe that's, that's an idea, maybe a thought.
But it really begs the question, I mean, so Mark just told us this morning about a mailing he did. So it's about $5,000 to do a postcard. But my fear is, even if you send a postcard out, I mean, I don't know about your mail, but I don't hardly look at anything, particularly a little postcard like that. That's just like what the real estate agents are sending, and I'm like, I mean, touch it once, it's in the recycle bin. So, you know, for $5,000 plus dollars, we don't know if we'd be getting the bang for the buck. I mean, some people would see it, but those that are probably not paying attention probably wouldn't even pay attention to that, so it's.
So I, I'll just share a story with you. Yesterday, my wife picked up the mail, and I hadn't seen the mail, and she didn't pick it up the day before, on Monday. So, so we had a little, little bit of mail, right? I started looking through it last night, and I was at the counter for five minutes, looking for the things I needed to open. Opened those things, the rest went right in the trash. So, so how do you know which is gonna be that important thing that we wanna look at? Now, granted, a, a water bill I would pay attention to, you know, in a, in a sewer bill. But would I pay, would I, would I pay attention to anything that's attached to it? I don't know. Depends upon, you know, what, what color it was, maybe it really dragged, draw my attention to it? I don't know, but it, but that's, that's just the, just the one person's reaction to it.
And you're only gonna have a single note, like, you can't put content on there. You can really just say, oh, by the way, the warrant's available.
It's just a, yeah.
And we have those on the rotary, you know, at town meeting, and it still doesn't get anybody to come, so.
The answer is probably somehow multimedia.
Right.
Because not everyone pays a tax bill. Well, if you, no, I mean, if, if you live in senior housing.
Mortgage company, yeah.
If you live in senior housing, or you're in an apartment complex, okay, you're paying rent.
Your house is paid for.
But you don't, but you don't have it, you don't get an individual, everybody doesn't get a water bill. Everybody doesn't check the internet. Everybody doesn't get the, our thin, thinning newspaper. So it's gotta be multimedia. We've gotta hit people from, from all angles, and what goes in there is, is the question. We'd love to hear your thoughts.
I would say it's a losing battle.
It's a, it's a challenge.
People don't care. People do not care about.
That's the answer, right.
Well, you all do, 'cause you're here, so.
Look at us.
We're your local forum.
That's right, I know. So thank, so thank you all for being here. I really do, we appreciate you being here.
And Paul Beck is back there putting us out live and recording. There he is waving to us.
Go out to all of townspeople, like in the reporter, or if they don't.
Yeah, the reporter, the reporter, the problem with reporters is that they're shrinking, shrinking violet as well. Shrinking violet.
Thanks for a few errors, Ed.
Oh, a lot of errors, you've noticed.
But that's happened actually within the past 10 of, 10 to 12 years, because I remember when I first came here, the reporter was, you'd read the report every week. And it was, there was a lot of stuff in there, but now it's, what's happened. Social media has really dug into their effectiveness, you know? And so what's happened is that people read social media, and the problem with that is that you don't know if even half of it's true. All right? And so there's no, there's no checking balance on that.
That's social media, Facebook, it's a bunch of crap. People still asking, what's going on down there by the post office? I mean, what the hell's the matter with them?
Yeah. Yeah, I, that's a, that's a good question sometimes. I mean, I, listen, I, I get it, it's the challenge we face in the world we live in. All right, I'm gonna move on to Article 20, all right? Because I know we're, in the interest of time, we're, we're moving, it's, we're already past an hour here, so I wanna try and keep, keep it to about an hour, an hour and 15, 20 minutes. All right, so Article 20 is, is a canvass, door-to-door canvassing solicitors improvement. So this is a bylaw change where, in fact, if you are, if you don't wanna be solicited, you could be put on a no solicitation list, and you would have to actually reach out to the police department, and they would, and they would, and you would send them a notification that they would, they would be, you'd be put on the list. And if somebody took a, a license to do door-to-door canvassing, which is by, by the way, not nearly as, as popular as it used to be. A lot of people just don't, on home, number one. Number two is the fact that it's, it's, people don't wanna be bothered by people coming to their door. And they're very, and they're concerned about who's gonna be at the door when they answer it. So that being the case, if you don't wanna be solicited, you can be put on a no solicitation list based upon this new bylaw change. That's a, that's the more or less the Reader's Digest version of this. And we'll actually come up with some different, the police chief will speak to this as well, and, and, yes.
But I really think that some of the people who come to my door didn't go and register.
Okay.
Okay, so that does me no good to be on this list, because those people are gonna come to my door anyhow.
So this puts a little more teeth in that, in the bylaw. But so if they, if they are, if they, if you ask them, or you, you tell them, look, I'm not on, I'm on a non-solicitation list, and they don't leave, you can actually call the police department, they will respond.
Do they have an actual tag or something that, so that I can verify?
They're supposed to have an ID, they're supposed to have an ID.
So I can ask for an ID?
Ask for an ID that's, that says, or that, they said, do you have a, a town solicitation permit?
Thank you.
Which is, which is something they, they're supposed to provide for you.
Okay.
All right. Any further questions about this? I know it's a lot of language, but, but we did effectively replace the, the former language with the new language. Okay? All right, let's get into Article 21. This is gonna be an interesting article. 21 is marijuana. Now, most people have probably heard this story probably at least 10 times so far. But we're gonna tell you just for, for the, for the sake of, of just covering it tonight, this afternoon, that back about seven years ago, seven years ago?
2017.
Five, five years ago, 2017, thank you. Five years ago, the town voted, we did a, a non-binding referendum. That's really an important thing to remember. Non-binding referendum. All there was, was, was an opinion poll of the residents to see if in fact they would support the sale of marijuana in Foxborough. And back then, the answer was no. It came back pretty significant, about 60, 40, I think it was something in that range. And as a result of that, the town actually came back, and then the following week, we went to town meeting with an article that would allow for medical, medical marijuana sales, and the town voted no against that.
No, no.
What's that?
Well, no.
Medical marijuana is first, right?
But you, you did adopt that, that, we do have medical marijuana.
I'm sorry, I apologize, it was the regular marijuana.
Recreation.
Recreational marijuana, but the town voted no for that. So thank you for clarifying that, yeah. So what happened was, since that time, the town said, you know, we're not ready for this yet, we wanna wait and see what happens with, with the towns around us. And so what happened was that a number of towns around us actually adopted it. And it is a significant revenue stream that comes with that, because you can charge a 3% tax on each transaction. So that means that, that we, we started looking at, at the various cities and towns that have adopted it statewide. And extraordinary thing happened this past year, that marijuana sales in Massachusetts actually exceeded alcohol sales in terms of tax revenue. So that being the case, that caught a few folks here's attention, saying, what, are we really missing out on this opportunity? So the, we, in the meantime, we did have an owner of a, of a parcel up on.
A net road.
A net road, who approached the, the selectmen and said, you know, we would like to at least look at this. Is there an interest in, in doing this? And at the time, the, the individual was prepared to, to make the request themselves. But upon further review and discussion, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to do that, because, first of all, there'd only be one or two licenses available in the town if they did that. And there was no guarantee, if they put forward the argument, that they would in fact get a license, because they may not have the best proposal. Okay, does everybody follow that? So what happened was that the, their, their council came back to us and said, you know, would the town be willing to at least look at this? And the board had an appetite for at least looking at it, you know, and say, look, you know, let's put it out to the community and see what the community thinks. And because now that it is in fact a, a, a revenue opportunity for the town, it does make sense for us to consider this. So that, and, and now that we see communities like Mansfield, like Plainville, Sharon, Attleboro, all these communities around us are all selling it, and we're just missing out on the revenue opportunity, because it's, it's here. Interesting, more interesting than that was communities such as Brookline, who has about five establishments, came and spoke to our police chief and said, you know, of all the places that we've had, we have fewer problems with those facilities than any, anything else like an alcohol. So, you know, so an alcohol sale. So, so we think that this is actually not a bad thing. We do think that there are a number of things we still have to do, and there's gonna be a process that we'll have to go through. But if we were able to, if it were to get passed, it would be limited to just a few locations in town, a few, a few zones in town with an overlay district.
The maps, right.
And the map is right there, which would show, would show, which would tell everybody that it would go only in certain areas of town, and that's it. And there was only two licenses that we could act. two licenses that we could actually adopt here in Foxborough. And in both cases, they would have to come before the board of selectmen for an approval process, as well as go to the planning board. So there, it's a process to get this. It takes about a year just to get a license. So even if we were to pass this in two weeks, or less than, less than two weeks, you wouldn't see a license in Foxborough for at least another year, maybe a year and a half, given, given the amount of time it takes to get this, get this done. So with that in mind, I'm happy to take any questions. I'd like to have Paige say a few words about it, because they've done a great job with, with pulling the details together on the zoning side, and then in doing a combination of work with the selectmen to try and advocate for, or at least explain to folks what the options are, and what it, and what, and what it entails. I'll, I'll turn it over to Paige.
Yeah, so much like the selectmen's approach, I think the planning board too is, you know, is presented to them from the selectmen, and we're putting it forward for consideration for the townspeople. You know, like, I think many people were surprised. I have here some numbers that, didn't bring my printout, so I apologize, but I have here, you know, Sharon. I think the big one was Sharon. We all know Sharon is a quiet little town. And they have a dispensary and a cultivation facility. They made, let's see, last year, $325,431 in revenue, plus an additional $228,541 in impact fees. So that's, you know, for a little community like Sharon, and when did they open? Let's see, they opened in August 2020. So they didn't even have a full fiscal year, I don't believe, for that. You know, Millis, another small town, that's only 8,000 people, they have 370,000 and plus in revenue with almost 500,000 in impact fees. So we went through and we took a look at the numbers. We also did communicate with Chief Grace, and I have here, he says, I've reached out to Sharon, Mansfield, and Plainville since the last meeting in Brookline. He gathered additional information. They said the impact, from a police perspective, has been minimal. Crime and other public safety concerns have been minimal within their communities. Sharon and Plainville's are off Route 1, and both have ample parking to avoid traffic issues. Mansfield's is in the shopping district, and the design and flow of traffic has not been an issue. So, you know, at first, Chief Grace, when we first brought it up, he was deer in the headlights, oh no. And then as he's done more research, I'm not saying he's jumping up and down for this, but he certainly, I believe he said he'd rather, you know, he's more concerned about drinking at this point than this. So I won't put words into him, but we did have him, you know, do a lot of talk with the police department, and I think at this point, we're all just looking to see what the residents want to do. I mean, it's, it's an opportunity, but it's not something that any of us are necessarily attached to. It's just more for the residents to consider.
Yeah, we're not, Bonnie, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to just say, this is a six-page zoning article, and from a zoning perspective, it addresses the issue. But what it really boils down to is, are these activities that Foxborough wishes to permit, the cultivation of marijuana and the retail sale of marijuana products? So you have six pages of zoning regulation, which appropriately, again, addresses the issue from a zoning standpoint. But are these uses of land, are these activities that we as a community, you know, wish to approve? And as Paige has indicated, there's certainly a fairly significant revenue stream that would be provided to the town if we do, do allow it.
Okay.
Reading this map from here is very difficult. Could you just give an overview for where the overlay district is?
Sure, let me just go over to the map.
The yellow is very pale.
I know, it's hard. So we're looking at Route 1 and that whole area, Pannas Park, all Route 1 area. And then down here, we have Springbrook, East Belcher, and then over sort of in the Forbes Crossing area. That's the, the general areas. They're all, you know, non-residential. So...
That's up by the stadium?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, stadium is that.
Stadium's here. So on both sides, it go, you know, all the way down to, this is East Street, this is Pine Street, so the lumber companies there. So it goes further down, right up, almost to the Rentham line, or actually to the Rentham line there. Doesn't include the state police barracks. I don't know why. So, but yeah, the, our major sort of industrial areas are where we include it.
Thank you.
Yep. Billy?
So I think that it would be a great help to get this money in. I wasn't really for marijuana before, but it's going to help the community center immensely, I think, yeah.
She wasn't for it before, but now that she's tried it, she likes it.
It's legal now.
Yes, I'm sorry.
What will happen with the drug-free zones? Because I know we've got signs of that.
Are in the schools?
Yeah.
Sure, those will actually remain in place. And they're actually, and the zoning itself does address the issue of where these facilities can be located. So it's, that was taken into consideration. So those, they remain in place. Yes?
Have the businesses, or especially craft, have they been kind of notified that these specific sites are the ones that we're recommending, you know, as a, you know, public knowledge to both, all the industrial, you know, areas that we've pointed out?
Yes.
I would think, not be concerned about that, just looking at ahead of time that, you know, why the town's doing it and so forth.
I think they're all lining up, actually.
Yeah. Yeah, just, just so you know, Joan, I mean, they, they were, initially, they were actually, they had actually approached us early on, not, not, not based on the person. They, they had actually expressed an interest in whether or not, they actually asked if the town would be interested in looking at this. So, early on.
A while ago.
A while ago.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do anything for that one. But we have not done any formal notification of any parties beyond what we're doing now. But I think, you know, there are various parties aware. You know, they're keeping eyes on it. We even had some marijuana cultivators at our public hearing, or I don't know if they're a cultivator or retailer, but we had some industry folk in the back of the audience. We didn't know who they were, but we saw the sign-in sheet. So obviously, people are watching. I think Foxborough's probably a highly desirable location.
Yeah, that's a great location.
Yeah. So it's, in, it's, it's become so mainstream in many ways now, that, that folks, it doesn't, isn't really nearly as controversial as you, as it once was. And so I think, however, it does, some people do feel strongly about it, and I can certainly respect that. But I think that we, we have to look at it realistically from the perspective that we're surrounded by it. We might as well, if we're going to miss out on, we might as well miss on our revenue opportunity if we can. So, I said, you, let me, I just said, she had a question.
As one of the little people in this room, my concern, I have a couple of concerns about marijuana. First of all, I'm a retired nurse. I do see it as a gateway drug. I do not want to tell the younger people, oh, you know, too anxious? Yeah, have a joint, you know? I don't think that's the way to go. And I would be concerned going out here that somebody that I might encounter driving had had a joint and was not particularly good driver under the influence of marijuana. And I would also say, don't be seduced by the tax money. You might be going down the wrong road.
So you're, you're actually the kind of person that will have the debate in that regard. So, because I know, because it, because there are, because there are folks who think that, first of all, that there's a, there's a debate whether or not it really is a gateway drug. That, that question has not been answered yet.
Now, by the same token, I don't deny people in current pain.
No, that's true. That's true. But, but I think with respect to, you know, people under the influence, they shouldn't be under the influence of anything when they drive their vehicle, period. And so I, that I don't disagree with you on, but I think the reality is, is that, and, and what has been identified so far is that it's actually better than, than alcohol in terms of the impact. So I, strangely enough, that, you know, you would, you, now, I'm not advocating for anybody to do that, trust me. I want to be clear about that. But, but, but the impact, from what I'm hearing, is, 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 is less, less impactful than alcohol.
And do we have any studies that show the relationship between smoking marijuana and lung cancer? I mean, just smoking in general is supposedly unhealthy for you.
Yeah, I think, I think smoking in general is, in fact, unhealthy. And I think, I don't, I don't have any studies that show marijuana versus, versus tobacco, but, but it's, it becomes such a diverse industry that it's not just limited to smoking marijuana anymore. It's, it's, there's edibles, things of that nature that, you know, so...
And that's how they seduce the young kids into it.
Yeah, well, there's, there's, there's controversy, there's no question, there's some controversy about the sale of marijuana or marijuana byproducts. But, and that's the debate that rages on. But what, what is, what I, what I'm saying to you, and what we're just explaining to folks, is that it's become much more mainstream, and some of the, the original beliefs about what it was have not been proven to necessarily to be as strong as they thought initially. So I think, you know, your, your points are very well-heard and very well-taken, but I do think that there are, there are different debates about that. And I, and that's going to be up to the town to decide that. Okay? John?
I think that we have a number of paid officials up here presenting all of this to us. And I think someone like, as far as I know, Bonnie Overe is a volunteer, and has done so much work. And that six pages of zoning, I'm sure he used, you know, other samples and so forth. But he does so much work with his town, he should be recognized as a, a volunteer that does do that, rather, as I say, you're all paid for.
Couldn't agree more. Couldn't agree more.
Who gets the gold star later.
That's right. Couldn't agree more. You know, I, I think this is one where Bonnie was more of an editor and a sort of advisor on this one. Town council actually drafted most of this one, particular article. But, but Bonnie was more of a...
I think we were covering...
But he does, but he does quite a bit of work for us, and I will tell you that we're, we're truly grateful for everything he does. All right, so with that said, I'm going to move on to Article 22. And this is primarily the reason why I think Bonnie wanted to be here, because he had something to do with, with the actual writing of this article. But I will say that this is another one where this is a potential revenue stream for the town. And this is, this is particularly interesting, because we were approached by the possibility of, of somebody who was interested and wanted to put a electronic billboard on 95. And in Foxborough, we currently don't have any such billboards. We have, we have billboards along Route 1, but the current bylaw does not allow, does not allow for electronic billboards to be, or any kind of billboard to be built along 95. So the, the, the talk was whether or not it made sense for us to put one, one, two, or three potentially on, on 95. And the revenue that comes from that can actually help, help the town as well. This is interesting, because we actually have a potential site that could be a town site, that could be a site for one of these, one of these such boards. And because at the DPW facility, because it actually abuts 95. What's even more interesting about it is the fact that revenue that could come, could actually help to renovate that facility, which has not been renovated in many, many years. So we thought about that as a potential option for the town as well. The talk has been limited to just electronic billboards and not the stationary billboards, for a couple of reasons. One is the fact that the, the electronic ones tend to generate more revenue, number one. Number two, they, they require less maintenance in that regard. And the technology is such now that the impact is very, very minimal on even folks that are living around it. But that said, there was quite a bit of discussion at the board of selectmen's level, and with the, and with Bonnie as an advisor on this, this matter, as well as town council, and a number of people who had, who weighed in, weighed in on this, that we would actually create some very strict limitations on this. So that at the end, we would only have two, maybe three billboards along 95. There is no opportunity for, for us to build along 495. This does not include 495. And it hasn't been, that didn't come part, a part of this discussion. And whether or not it happens in the future remains to be seen. But 95 is, would be limited to just two, possibly three, depending upon where these would be built. And the reason why it's done that way is because there is a significant separation between the boards, and, and also because of, there is a ramp from 95 onto 495, which actually impedes some of the construction as well. So we, we have, we have taken that all into consideration, and that is the proposal that's, that's been listed here before you. I can't tell you how much revenue we would actually get until the board was actually in place, and, and we had a bid as to who would actually sell the board to, or take the board over for the town. But that would have to be bid out, and so, so we would have to find out what that would actually be. But even if we don't own the board itself, the town actually can do a host agreement on those, on those signs, which then means we also have an additional opportunity for revenue that comes to the town on that as well. So we are at the point where, again, just another, the last two articles, 21 and 22, are, do have revenue streams attached to them, which I think, you know, is interesting, because it's not, it's non-tax revenue. That's not, doesn't mean we can impact your, your local taxes because of that. And it provides, provides another additional opportunity for, for funding that could be used for a number of things in town, as we, as some of them, which already have been mentioned. Yeah, have been mentioned. So happy to take any questions on that, and certainly happy to let Bonnie say his, a few words about it if you'd like.
Yeah, just want to add two points. First of all, all the bylaw does is authorize electronic billboards on 95, or alongside 95. In order for somebody to construct and operate a billboard, you would need to get a special signed permit from the zoning board of appeals. And the zoning board of appeals has authority not just to say yes or no, but if it says yes, to impose appropriate conditions. And second, the only reason there are not, in the bylaw, at the present time, any authorization to construct any, and operate any billboards along 95, is not because we specifically have said no. It's just that when we were considering a revision of the signed bylaw back in 2014, because at that point in time, there were only billboards along Route 1, we just considered to include billboards along Route 1. We never even raised the discussion of billboards along, along 95. So it's not as if the bylaw currently says you cannot have billboards along 95. It's just silent on the issue, because we just never even discussed it.
Just never came up. Never came up. And what's interesting is that the electronic billboards have, have become more commonplace now. If you know, if you come, if you head, if you're heading south on 95 from Boston, if you, if you come over the Walpole Line, there were three of them right there. So that's, you know, seeing that, we would probably want, that's why I think there was some discussion about limiting it. So we didn't have that many close together like that, a bunch together like that. But, so, yeah.
I know they're on 95, but I go back to a few years back, when you drive from here to Florida, billboards everywhere.
Right, right.
And there was a big move at the time to eliminate...
Right.
...billboards off of the interstates. Has, has the federal government changed their philosophy on this now?
Yeah, so, so there's still a permitting process that you have to go through, Bob. And so, so even if we were to allow it, we still have to go through, through a permitting process in Boston, which allows us to, to whether or not that will be done. But generally speaking, there has been more openness towards the use of, of electronic billboards along, along major, major highways, as opposed to the stationary ones. But I think that, you 're thinking, going back to the Eisenhower years where...
Oh, yeah.
Where, where they did Highway Beautification Act.
Yes.
There was, and what was going on was, there was, there were a number of these billboards, but they weren't maintained at all. And as a result, they became ISOs. And, and they became, in some cases, they became too many. So this was, this was a case that was taken into consideration when we developed this bylaw. We don't want to be a flurry of them. We want to have a few that makes sense for the community, but don't, don't really have a bunch of them.
Now, we look at, say, at say, two to three. Is that northbound, southbound, or...
I think all of them are located on this, would it be on the southbound side? Maybe one on the northbound.
One would be on the northbound.
One would be on the northbound.
Or one, one that a, a party is interested, has indicated some interest in constructing one on the northbound side. But to, just a further point, you know, as far as what, what Bill was saying, if the zoning board approves any billboard, then that party has to go get a license from the state outdoor advertising board, which is part of the Department of Transportation. They have fairly extensive regulations as far as what a billboard can and cannot do. Some of those regulations, we've also adopted in our signed bylaw. And regardless, one of the conditions we always impose is compliance with the state regulations. The state has a contract with the federal government that governs what can or cannot be done with respect to highway billboards. And actually, any, any highway sign.
So that concludes the town meeting, folks. Is, I, and hopefully in another week and a half, we'll be able to say, this, this is it. Congrat, this is it. So, so any further questions before we, we kept you here nine, almost nine, 92 minutes, 93 minutes. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
I've got a question about money coming into the town.
Sure.
Whatever happened, there's a lot, a water tank up on highway, up the Route 1. A big water tank up there.
So that money goes actually to the water department. It does not come to, to the town.
But there's no sign on there, so there's no money.
Right.
So we've been talking about getting money from that for years.
Yeah, for, for whatever reason... Yeah, for, for whatever reason, that has not drawn the level of attention that we thought it might. We thought.
Could you just get a check for 22,000?
Yeah, but I think that was for the, uh, the one inside Gillette.
Oh, okay.
It was, it was one inside, yeah. Yeah, just the one inside Gillette actually does generate some revenue.
Yeah, we just got a check for that one.
Yeah, but there is no, for the one on side, I'm actually surprised by that, you